All right, is ready to go?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, good afternoon, everyone. We call to order the City of Chester Planning Commission meeting for April 9th, 2025, and it is now 2:09. Sorry for delay due to technology issues. All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Susan Dennis.
Present.
Leola Williams.
Here.
Eartha Banks.
Present. Okay. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? Does anybody have any comments? All right, seeing none, we are ready to proceed. Can we get approval of the March 12th, 2025, public meeting minutes?
I approve of the March, what is it, 20?
March 12th.
The March 12th meeting.
Okay. And I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it.
Let the record show that I was not present, so I did not vote.
All right, so Ms. Williams has abstained. All right, motion carries. And we are now ready for... Turn it over to the Planning Director.
All right, thank you very much. We have, as the agenda says, four items today under new business, and the first one is a preliminary final plan, which we've called 1301 Honan Street, Liza Morales, law consolidation. And what I plan to do is just give a little background, and then go into my comments that were in my letter, then let the applicant get up if they'd like to and speak to the project, and then we'll also have the city engineer speak on it. So first of all, this project proposes to consolidate two existing lots into one lot, and a two-story townhouse or row house exists at 1301 Honan Street. The adjacent lot proposed to be consolidated with 1301 Honan Street, which oddly enough is called Zero Keystone Road by Delaware County. We're still not understanding why that is, but it's a vacant parcel, and it would be connected to that existing townhouse. As you know, this is in the R3 medium-density residential zoning district, and the intent of the R3 zoning district is to provide for medium-density neighborhoods with a mix of housing types. And I would just, for further information, just go back to where this lot is. It is an odd lot, as far as the city lots go in the city, and there's one just north of it, you can see in this image, similar to it, and this must have been part of the original Highland Gardens layout. And just also for reference, around the south side of the subject property that we're talking about today, and to the immediate west, with the addresses 2008 through 2600, they're all owned by the city. Here's a couple images of the site. The one on the left is looking at 1301 Honan Street, and you'll notice how that awkward light, awkward accessway, if you will, to that property at Zero Keystone Road is on both sides, the north and south side. It's a narrow accessway, if you will, or frontage to that vacant parcel. And then there's the plan itself. So just going through a couple comments, I'm not going to read them all in my letter, but I will point out the numbers that I'm going to talk about. So under, on the second page, under 1, obviously, the use is permitted by right, and expanding this is not a problem, expanding 1301. We just would like, from the applicant, if they're, can today, just to clarify what they propose to use the vacant parcel for. Our understanding is it's just to combine the lot, have extra space for 1301, but we just would like them to clarify that, if that's possible. And then, comment 2, I just wanted to point out that I did make a note of something we wanted changed on the plan, and that was just clarification on the minimum side yard setback requirement, and just identify that as an existing nonconformity, and that no change is proposed. It's just a simple note on the plan would do. And then comment 3, this is something we always identify on our land development plans, that just, if there is a fence proposed, or an expansion of an existing fence, a zoning permit will be needed for that proposed fence. And then also, just like all our projects, we also, we may make a decision on this project today, but we also are in waiting for the county's comments, and would not bring this to county council, or county, city council, until the planning department, the planning commission from Delaware County provides us their comments. So they'll be forthcoming, their meeting is next week. Did you have any questions for me today on this, before we ask the applicant if they're here to come up?
No, did you have any questions, or we want to wait for the applicant?
Wait for the applicant.
Wait for the applicant. So if the applicant is present, would you please come forward and state your name and address?
Okay. Doesn't look like the applicant's here. Yeah, may not be here. They were invited.
Okay.
I would say on my comments, and Ron, I don't know if you want to come up and speak to this a little bit, but from the zoning perspective, we'd be okay if this was approved with condition today, from the planning and zoning departments' perspective, but I'll let Ron speak to the plan as well.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. From an engineering standpoint, we provided our engineering review comments in our letter to the planning commission, that would be a condition of any approval. Most of our comments deal with drafting standards and survey notes that we can work out with the land surveyor. We don't have any objections to what they're proposing. It makes sense to consolidate this lot and have it be accessory to the existing homeless there.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Okay. I'm sorry, applicant's not here, because I had some question with the applicant. Hmm. So...
Do you want to identify what those questions are, and we could try to follow up with you or clarify?
Well, it was just more clarification on some things. I see they needed quite a few revisions on some things, on their plans, and also, number 7, on the general comments from Collier, I was just wondering what those obstructions were, and, let's see, anybody else have any other?
I think my questions were satisfied. I just wanted to know if they owned it, and I found out that they do own it.
Yes.
Yes, so, that, and then the fence concern will come up later, so those were my only two concerns.
Okay, yeah, when they apply for a zoning permit, right. Yep, yep, okay.
I can't let you know. They were in the middle of putting a fence up, is when they realized that they had to reverse subdivide the property, so they got to stop work, and, you know, they were trying to fence the property in, and that's what prompted them to come to us and realize that you can't just fence in open land, it had to have a structure on it, which is why they're reverse subdividing it.
Okay.
That's right. Fence is an accessory use, so it needs a principal use, so the house will be the principal use for that property, when it's consolidated.
And did they state what they were using the land for?
They did indicate to us, Kim, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but they did indicate they homeschool some children, their own children, and they wanted a bigger yard for that area so they could play during their school hours.
Horticulture.
And horticulture and gardens, yeah, so...
Okay.
We just were, we just wanted to make sure that they didn't plan on doing something more intensive, but, you're, right, right, which they wouldn't be allowed to with the zoning permit, we just want to make sure they're aware of that.
Okay, do you have any questions? All right, we're ready to make a motion?
Moved that the planning commission approved Lisa Morales's preliminary final subdivision and land development application for the consolidation of 1301 Honan Street and Zero Keystone Road into a single lot in the R3 medium-density residential zoning district subject to the following condition. All comments of the Colliers Engineering and Design Review Letter dated April 4th, 2025, and the Planning and Zoning Department Review Letter dated March 31st, 2025, are addressed to the satisfaction of the city's planning and zoning department.
I second. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So moved, everything. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Motion carries.
The second thing on the agenda is a sketch plan, and again, remember, a sketch plan does not require a formal recommendation from the planning commission. But today, what we have in front of us is a proposal to consolidate three lots, that's 1200 through 1204, 1206, and 1208 West Third Street into one lot, and the construction of a 3,000-square-foot contractor's garage/office building. The three properties are currently vacant. Access to the consolidated lot is proposed from West Third Street, Lamoken Street, and West Union Street, which is really an alley. Seven total off-street parking spaces are indicated on the plan. There'll be three outdoor spaces, including 1 ADA space, and then four indoor parking spaces are proposed inside the proposed garage building. You can see on the screen here, this project is located in the C1R, and surrounding the C1R is an R3 just to the north, and that is where the TruWay Pentecostal Church of Christ is, literally north of our property. And then surrounding it is also an LIC, and to the south, more LIC. So that's light industrial and commercial. And I would just add that, at this intersection of Lamoken and West Third Street, there are some apartment buildings surrounding that intersection on the west, the south, and the east, and there's quite a large multifamily building on the east across the street, on Lamoken Street. It's a two-story building, which has, I'm not sure the number of units, but it's definitely near, about 10 units is what I would say. And then, like I said, the project site is vacant. Now, what I'd also like to, here's a couple photos, just for reference. What I'd like to do is just point out a couple things in the letter, just like I did the last project. One is under comment B, the Chester, City of Chester Comprehensive Plan, Division 2035, as you know, is the city's comprehensive plan, and this project actually falls within Planning District 3, and within that is the Third Street Significant Corridor Improvement Area. And for this improvement area, the comprehensive plan calls for design strategies and development, and redevelopment projects that reduce motor vehicle dependence, dependency, encourage public transportation, and provide bicycle and pedestrian mobility. Just wanted to point that out, because we may revert back to that comment at some point. Under comment 1, under the city ordinance, city zoning ordinance, I should say, we did indicate that this proposed use is permitted by right in the C1R, and I just made an additional note that, as you know, because we've seen these projects before relating to Tradesman Headquarters, a maximum of 25% of the lot shall be used for outdoor storage, and there are limits on hours of operation as well. And then we've, as the letter states, asked that the applicant, when they have the opportunity to come up, just talk about their proposed use, the proposed hours of operation, and how they'll be sensitive to the adjacent residential uses. In comment 2, just wanted to point out that, that based on the sketch plan, it appears that the proposal meets the dimensional requirements for the C1R district. And then under 3, we point out that a zoning permit for any proposed fence will be needed, that'll be a separate permit, if the application is recommended, and we'll proceed with a zoning permit application on that. Then under design and design, design and design standards and guidelines, excuse me, we mentioned the applicant should clarify that the percent of exposed metal panels on the building facade, if there are any, will comply with the zoning ordinance. As you know, this, we've seen this come up in previous projects as well, with the limitation of 60% of the building can be maximum metal panels. Comment 5, I'll point out that the applicant should provide additional landscaping to buffer views from parking from West Third Street and Lamoken Street, and again, they being in the sketch plan phase, they didn't do a full landscaping plan, but we would ask that, when a full development plan is brought to us. Skipping down to comment 7, I mentioned the Planning and Zoning Department strongly encourages use of ornamental fence types along the front yards of corner lots. Comment 8, we would, on a land development plan, want to confirm that the maximum sound levels will not be exceeded on the site during hours of operation or at any time, and that's part of the environmental protection ordinance within the zoning ordinance. Moving on down on page 3, off-street parking and loading, just so you're aware, and you probably read this, that we used a combination of warehouse and office to come up with a calculation for parking requirements. Comment 11, we also asked for clarification from the applicant that the indoor spaces that they're proposing, the indoor parking spaces, throw the clarification, if they will need to back out onto the driveways into the right-of-way of West Third Street, because we would have some concerns if there would be backing out onto that street, for a number of reasons. One, being the width of the driveway is quite wide, there's almost two lanes that enter the building, and coming back to the comprehensive plan, calling for this to be a pedestrian-friendly streetscape, interrupting the sidewalk like that would be a concern of us as far as improving that area. Skipping down to comment 14, just wanted to point out that, and I just mentioned this, that West Third Street and the zoning areas would want to minimize potential pedestrian and vehicle conflicts on the sidewalk along the north side of West Third Street. And then skipping to the page 5, comment 20, and I know the applicant is aware of this, that any development plan would want to confirm the location of street trees, which would And, just coming to my last comments here. I would just make a commentary from a planning perspective, and not necessarily from a zoning ordinance perspective, just our concern, and we've had this discussion before, planning commissions, commission meetings, and the zoning ordinance doesn't necessarily address specifically architectural details, but I do want to point out, if the proposal is proposing to do a pole barn type building, that the utilitarian design that pole barns typically have does not necessarily mesh well with the residential character of the existing adjacent properties. So we'd want the applicant to speak to that, and how they may mitigate that, or be more sensitive to the surroundings. Other than that, those were my major comments in the letter, and I'm happy to take any questions before the applicant comes up.
Have any questions, Mr. Fritz, or just the applicant? If there's anyone here representing this property, this issue, please come forward, state your name and your residence.
Do you want this more?
Hi, my name is Alex Rodriguez, I'm with Catania Engineering Associates, and we put the sketch plan together for you to look at, and I think if you look at the picture of the site on the TV screen and slash monitor versus the plan, I think you can see that our client, who is in the landscaping business, is well aware of how to, you know, make a property look visually appealing to the neighborhood. Instead of having 10-foot-wide concrete sidewalks that are currently dilapidated, he's going to put in a grass strip along the two street frontages of Third and Lamoken Street, you'll have a five-foot sidewalk, new ADA ramps at the corner for pedestrian accessibility for the neighborhood. The sidewalks themselves will be designed with a 2% cross slope, also promoting ADA accessibility for the neighborhood. And at the driveway entrances, the sidewalk there will also be designed for ADA accessibility for the neighborhood. So there's, there's nothing with our design that is prohibiting the neighborhood for use, for public use of the sidewalks within the right-of-way. To just do a quick overview, okay, of this site, the building is shown partially in the center, going towards closer to Third Street. We set it approximately 11 feet behind the right-of-way. We are allowed a 10-foot setback, but we set it back 11 foot. The parking lot side, which is along the Union, north top side of the property there, that would allow for an ADA parking stall inside of the property for off-street parking. There's also the two parking stalls that are on the northwest corner, and then a dumpster pad closer to the building. Inside of that building, it's designed right now with a double bay doors on the front and the back of the building, such that vehicles can pull in and then pull out in a forward motion, and the purpose of that was because the depth of this property isn't big enough to allow for full turning circulation for a landscaping-type vehicle, where they have a pickup truck with a trailer in the back. So basically, you know, the building is designed to allow those vehicles to be able to move forward into the building, either from the Lamoken, or the back alley, or Third Street, no matter which way you can pull into the building, you'll be able to continue forward, because the garage doors are on both the front and back of the building. We've made some minor tweaks based on some of the review letters, so, for example, originally, if the subdivision, or the sketch plan that you showed, we weren't showing the sidewalk and grass strip towards the corner of the Third and Lamoken. We were basically just showing it as shown on a screen there. So because of the review, we thought it might be better to, you know, help the community, and we, and we were willing to put in, the applicant was willing to put in the improvements, so that sketch plan shows that modification as our first trial to try to improve things for you at this meeting. And then, even with the backup concern, you know, we do have an office building that was, I mean, an office space in the building, which was pretty much cutting off one of the garage door locations. So the front of the building on Third, if a car did pull forward, that one would always have to pull out backwards. So what we, so what we did try to do to make council feel more comfortable, is we're So in this part of the building here, since there's going to be a garage, an office space inside the building, we're going to now slide the office space towards the front, they can have the backside for any additional interior storage, and there will never be anybody trying to back out of this space, because we eliminated that one garage door there. Again, with the remaining door on this side, and then the remaining driveway entrance on this side, the vehicles that pull in can still pull out in a forward motion. So we've added curb and sidewalk, ADA ramp, we eliminated one of the garage doors, and we also just, for now, for a sketch plan, we kind of tried to show some additional landscaping, but when we get a landscape architect involved, we'll get that more heavily filled in, and, you know, everything will comply, you know, with the neighborhood and with the size available for the landscaping features themselves. Let's see. Again, this is a by right property for a construction company, and it specifically says it's not limited to a landscaping-type business, which this is. The applicant is pretty much going to just try to store his vehicles there for the grass clipping operations that they have. As far as the hours of operations, they're just proposing to have it pretty much like a daytime operation, where they'll go in in the morning, get the vehicles, go out to their jobs at the end of the day, they'll come back, they park them, and they leave. There's not going to be any nighttime activity, and even during the day, it's only going to be a little bit of movement when they pick up the trucks and drop them off. They're not doing any work on the site, on the property itself. Aesthetically, the building is going to have a gabled roof, so it's going to have more of a residential look, just from the building, its construction itself, and the applicant is willing to, you know, meet with the director of planning and try to come up with some ideas on what they can do to spruce it up, improve the types of doors on it, you know, add some type of battened board, or some other type of material, two-tone paints, to try to help make that building fit in more with the neighborhood. I think along the one side of the building, we can probably practically screen the building itself with, you know, with a heavy amount of evergreen trees along that side. The applicant's willing to install bigger-than-normal evergreen trees that you typically see on new construction, on a new construction project, you'll typically see evergreen trees specified at 6 to 8 foot high. We're going to try to come up with a 10 to 12-foot starting tree for trying to give it a much better filling and screening effect. We can supply a security fence that would also improve the look of the neighborhood as far as the, I guess it's almost like an ornamental wrought iron that they're looking for. Typically, people are putting in an aluminum rail, picket rail fencing. The only thing, I guess, we'd like to try to get some clarification on is that one ordinance item cited in the review letter was talking about trying to get, almost like a privacy-type fence for the first 4 to 5 feet, it sounded like, and yet, they recommended another comment, the wrought iron fence. I don't know if you've wanted something in the 4 to 5 foot high, I believe, that you mentioned in the review letter, and then make it a solid privacy fence, and then that would help anything with the screening, but I know that it seems like there was two, two comments in here that was conflicting. So number 5, you're looking for something that, for security purposes, and it looks like you're trying to say parking at eye level, 4 to 5 feet high. You had low walls, or similar features.
Yeah.
But yet, and I can agree, we don't want chain link fences, but then it had ornamental fences encouraged, so I don't know what your preference is as far as that. I know that the other comment, where you were trying to ask for the screening of the driveway entrance, I guess, we, this fence along the Union Side Street, we could install a privacy fence along that side, so that when you close the gate, that will be effectively screened on that side. I don't know if you want the same thing here, or if you just want the wrought iron ornamental fence, but whatever, whatever preference you want, it's just a matter of us specifying that type of fence, so we can make that work.
Yeah, I'll just speak to that real quickly. One was, the purpose of that number 5 is it's screening the parking, and it does say that it can be landscaping, or fencing, or both, so that, it's really just trying to say there should be some kind of buffer, period. And then the next one is about the type of fence. It doesn't necessarily... It doesn't necessarily get into the height, which again, we can talk about be the preferred height.
So, so you're looking more for just, I guess, evergreen plantings on the inside of the fence to, for the screening portion?
Some landscaping that, yeah, it screens the parking area and the, what I would call like the pavement area on the north side there.
So we can comply with that. So again, like I said, I believe the, the owner here is definitely willing to improve the look of the neighborhood, willing to improve the look of the, of the building so that it helps fit in with the neighborhood better. And we would add a note to the plan as far as the environmental concern about the, the noise. We'll add a note to, to the fact that they have to stay within the zoning ordinance sound criteria.
Okay.
So you have any questions?
I'm Dave with Estrada, so I have more questions about the operations, time, can answer them kind of questions for you. So it'd be Monday through Friday, the guys get there, they carpool together or take public transportation. They get in at seven, they're out of there by 7:15, 7:30. They're gone all day, unless it's a rain day, they come back, drop the truck back off and they're back out, public transportation or they all carpool together. This will be just the landscape inside of it, so it'll only be grass cutting, so it'll be a truck and a trailer. So it's a Chevy 2500 with a 16 or 18 foot trailer. And they all kind of come together, leave together. It's a three to four man crew in every truck and they come and go together and it's a pretty light, just when we build, park everything inside. It's a pretty simple little basic operation here. It's none of the heavy construction or just the grass cutting landscape side of the business. The building, like I said, we do, you know, 80% metal, we can do border batten, we can change the design of the building a little bit to make it look more modern look. That's something I think we can work with you guys on wherever you want to make it look. It's kind of tough, you go back to the pictures, to make any kind of building that's not a residential home match what's in the neighborhood. Because we have everything from CMU, the stucco, the block, the brick. It's kind of like, so with that, we can make it look, one of our ideas would make it more of a modern look with like more of just one single roof line from front to back, a little taller in the front, to make it look like the buildings that are on that street already. And it's like more of a modern look, we can do that. But again, the garage doors are front and back, so the trucks come in, they pull back out. Every truck, there's always at least three guys in a truck, so if for some reason you're worried about Third Street, there's multiple guys in the vehicle at all times. So if you're worried about somebody coming out and something like that, that could be handled. That's just the operations, how the business is run. The other thing we had from the impervious coverage, we can do pavers, impervious pavers. There was something in there about.
Yeah, during, during the preliminary final, when we go through stormwater and land development, if you want, we can also put in pervious pavers to help reduce the, the coverage of, and I, would the pervious pavers also reduce the annual fee for stormwater from this, from that stormwater group?
Only if you can prove the soil underneath, as in.
Can we put in a, can we put in a simplified system itself to hold the zone?
You have to figure out how you're going to do it, but don't, people assume just putting pervious pavers down solves it, but if the ground underneath the pavers is contacted, is it.
So we put our own retention, underground retention.
Yeah, you have to address the soil.
Sure.
Any questions?
Just a couple. I know we were talking about fencing and I was taking into consideration that Pentecostal church that has the red cross. I don't know if you can throw that picture back up? In the background, to take into consideration that you may not want to put something tall in front of their cross, you know, just out of consideration for your neighbor. And if you do landscaping, do something that would still complement, but not hide their whole building, yeah.
Well, our building is.
The front.
About 59 feet from the alley. And the alley's about 20 feet.
No, I'm talking about.
Height.
No, no, I know, but I'm saying, but because of that, that large gap, our height would.
Just thinking about that, just thinking about the church. The other thing was, what kind of signage did you say you were going to have?
I, I didn't speak on signage.
Okay.
And we wouldn't need minimum signage, it should be, minimum signage just for deliveries or something like that, we wouldn't need much signage at all.
Okay, and the last thing, the sidewalk. I was wondering how the city was going to, I'm, I'm kind of addressing this both ways, how the city's going to handle the sidewalk? Because if you look at the sidewalk, it is bad and what they are proposing looks nice, but then what happens further down the block is, are you, or is it just going to stop there with their property with a sidewalk and a strip? Just wondering how that's going to fit in.
Yeah, I can speak to that and Ron, you can correct me, but in the end, the development is somewhat contained by what is surrounding them as far as improvements go. Now, would the city like to improve all the sidewalks on West Third Street? Yes. And at some point, you know, as infrastructure improvements and funding comes, we would do that, but right now, the developer can only be responsible what's adjacent to their property.
I understand what he's responsible for, but I'm just trying to say, that's okay because you are planning down the road to extend.
Yes, because like I mentioned, it's in the comprehensive plan that that's a major core, or.
Okay, alright.
And the fact that they'd be willing to do the ADA ramps, that's like, it just would hopefully cause some momentum on that street.
Also, I know, I've noticed that the parking, I see some of the residential or the residents parking on the sidewalks. Now, I do want to ask you, are your employees planning, the ones that are driving in, are they planning to park on the street or do you have parking on the inside of your building?
We have, we have off-street parking two back here. We have one ADA spot there and the building itself would provide additional parking.
So that's enough for your employees that you have?
Yes.
Okay. And also with the, is that an apartment building that's next to where you plan to put your building? I know you said you're trying to cut back the noise. How would you help, you know, with the windows so close to where your building?
Well, the building itself is going to be about 10 feet away.
Oh, okay.
So, see, there's grass strip in, in, on this side of the building.
Oh, okay.
We, we have a, we got a 10-foot side yard setback that we have to comply with, so we're not going to be building directly against that existing house on that TV screen there.
I wanted to know about the fire marshal review. I see we have a person here from the fire department.
Nope, he's police.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just saw a badge, I didn't see it. I was wondering about that.
Well, there is a fire hydrant right on the next corner at Brew Mall and Third, so we're, we're well within 600 foot of a fire hydrant, so yeah, we're fine.
And for a sketch plan, we didn't have an official review by the fire marshal, but here at the fire marshal office, but they would ask for the same thing, the turning truck radius and access to it, which being on a corner, you know, most of the fire apparatus would probably just be from the street. But they would look at it, for a formal land development plan.
Okay. Okay.
And we don't have to make a.
No, we don't have to make a recommendation. The main thing is to, oh, how many employees do you usually?
There's going to be probably in that, that facility, there'll be about two, four, six, eight, eight to 12, depends on the seasonality, because they come together and there's two, three guys in a truck, four guys in a truck, depends on, like I said, it's the grass cutting division of it, so.
Okay.
A lot of guys in a truck, a lot of guys live together already.
Alright. And the neighboring property, is there, I mean, is there any problems with the neighbors?
We bought the park property a while ago and just cleaned it up and just trying to make it look even better than it is right now.
Okay.
So, so far, no, no issues.
Alright, thank you. Main thing is just to follow along with the planning commission and then we want to hear what the engineer has to say for the city. Okay? Alright, Mr. Ron?
Ron, talk, yep.
Thank you for your.
So, Madam Chairman, this is just a sketch plan, so it's somewhat informal. We provided a lot of comments and it's for really the applicant in preparation of their preliminary plan, which will get a formal review. Some of our concerns deal with the neighboring property to make sure that the fencing still allows the neighbor to maintain their property. All the gas utilities are on that side of the property and there may need to be a note on the plan allowing for an access easement for neighbor properties, because the only way to maintain their side of the property is from entering your property.
Your property.
Right. And that's very typical in this urban setting that, you know, you need to access other people's property to maintain your property. And to make sure the fire escape for that multifamily adjacent building and how they exit out the back as well. We always have concerns about backing out onto the busiest street. There may need to be a zoning relief for having three driveways on three streets that, that may be a zoning, trip to the zoning hearing board, how they deal with that. In terms of, the applicant said there might be eight to 12 employees and if they, what I see in the latest sketch, and we didn't do a review of that sketch, is that the pickup trucks have trailers behind them. And so when they're parked in there overnight, the employees can't come in the morning and park there, so they'll have to park on the street. And even at the end of the day, when the trucks are coming back, I'll let you speak. When the trucks are coming back, we have trucks and trailers and they have to wait for the garage doors to go open, be stopped on West Third Street and then pull in. And that's part of the concern is West Third Street is such a heavily traveled property. Obviously, we don't want people backing out, but even if, you know, there's a train of three pickup trucks waiting with their trailers to get in and waiting for the garage doors go up, that in itself is a traffic hazard. So other than our letter, this is just some of the highlights that we wanted to bring in. Certainly, the applicant can address some of those concerns, but again, it's informal right now.
So with, our guys are a driver and laborers. So with that, there's only three trucks, there'll be three or four drivers and they carpool.
It's a, it's a car, yeah, it's a carpooling situation. We don't, they're not going to have eight cars coming at the same time. And then again, you know, they, they have the parking in the back and even if, even if they did bring an extra vehicle, they can still park the one in the back temporarily while they get the cars out and then put it in the building. So there, there's plenty of room for parking.
And the front doors, we can do auto lift with the doors.
Pass on your AS2.
So you can do auto lift, open up, so the guys are not.
Sitting on.
Sitting out.
Right. And, and I, I, I really don't think that this, this part of the town on Third Street is that heavily trafficked. But, but there's people, there's people that park on the side of the street all the time. So if you're, if you have, if it's safe enough to be able to parallel park on a street, not that we're going to back it up, but if somebody had to back it up, backing it up isn't really that much different than trying to parallel park. You're basically pulling your car forward and backwards while traffic's trying to move. I mean, it, it, I can't imagine it's that bad if people are parallel parking the street, so. But like I said, our goal is not to be able to back up on the street. Our goal was designing this building so that you can pull in and out in one direction. So, just to keep that in mind, please.
Alright. Thank you, any other comments?
I don't. Yeah, you can take, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. Good luck.
Yeah. Are you ready for the third thing? Alright, the third item is another sketch plan and it's a proposal that we have seen before and it's a proposal to consolidate six existing lots between 921 and 933 East 21st Street into one lot and construct a five-story building at 7,000, roughly 7,000 square feet footprint with a total of 35 dwelling units. So there'd be 11 one-bedroom units and 24 two-bedroom units. The planning indicates a total of 47 ground level parking spaces, of which two are ADA parking spaces and 14 are located in a basement level garage. And as mentioned, the planning commission previously reviewed a preliminary final plan dated June 27th, 2024. And this application was denied in October 23rd, 19, in 2024, not 2025. City Council denied the preliminary final plan. And the applicant is coming back with a new proposal. Just to remind you, this project is in the R3 zoning district, which is a medium density residential zoning district. And the intent of the R3 is to provide for medium density neighborhoods with a mix of housing types. And just to point out a little bit more about that site, I'll go back to the aerial image. It's at the very end of East 21st Street and right now, that site is woodland and beyond that street, it slopes down to Ridley Creek and then on to, on the other side is a wider property and you can see the stadium to the east there. Two multifamily apartment buildings are located on the immediate north side of East 21st Street, opposite the project site. And like I said, there's woodland on the site and there are some steep slopes, those slopes being 15 to 25% or, or even greater. Going to my comments, I'll just jump through some of these. Of course, the use is allowed by right within the R3. And then jumping to comment three, additional requirements for specific uses, and this will get into the, some details, but where there's retaining walls proposed, since this is a steep site, there is going to have to be a need for some retaining walls. We recommend from the planning and zoning department that landscaping at the base of these retaining walls be installed to soften their visual impact, especially on the taller retaining walls. Skipping down to page three, comment seven, we mentioned in the zoning ordinance that new utilities should be placed underground. So in a land development plan, we'd like to see where the utilities are located and we would like to see them underground, that, those being electric and, and coaxial and things like that, not the, the stormwater or water. Comment nine, and I think Ron will pick up on this, the slope of the driveway shall not exceed 10% within 20 feet of a street right of way. This is a comment in the zoning ordinance. The land development plan will have to address that and make sure that's complied by. Comment 11, we did share this sketch plan for the fire department, such it is, it is a large project, so we did talk about this, even though it is a sketch plan. And I know the applicant does have our template for a fire truck and may be able today to address any concerns of access by a fire truck would have. Skipping to page four, comment 15, of course, the land development plan, we would want street trees to be presented and then we talk about just making sure that the separation in between those street trees is clarified on the plan. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out, under general comments, it's comments 17 through 20, we did notice on the plan that there are two parking spaces at the very western side of the garage part of it, seemed like there'd be an awkward turnaround to exit the indoor parking area and we'll ask the applicant to explain that, which I think they're prepared to do. We also wanted to pick up on that the applicant should be sensitive to the existing homes to the west and across the street, in fact, but mostly on the west and use evergreen landscaping to help screen the new development. And again, that should be shown on a formal land development plan. If any trees are getting preserved, which is somewhat doubtful on the site because there'd be, looks like heavy disturbance on the site, there should be details to protect any existing trees. And then one comment, being such a large development, we're also asking that the applicant consider using green roofs or white roofs or some kind of solar energy system on that roof to take advantage of these kinds of sustainable approaches. And those were my general comments and I'm happy to take. And I'm happy to take any questions before the applicant is able to come up and speak about the project.
Any questions for us? Is there an applicant here? All right, you come forward, state your name. And address.
My name's James Meloseka. And you want the address to the property or?
Your home address.
You want my office address? It's 319 West Front Street, Media, Pennsylvania, 19063.
Hello again, Alex. So we've seen the comments from previously submitted plans. I feel that it was fire truck circulation concern. The older, original submission had a garage door entrance on the front of the building. I believe that the original plan was trying to get even a trash truck in through the building. So we've, you know, we took a look at the site, tried to see if we can make it better for you. I think we got a, I think we got a better version with this layout for you because now we're able to get full circulation around the entire building. We've, we have a small entrance into the garage, but it'd just be for some additional parking. We've added an outdoor dumpster pad in the back so that the trash truck could, trash truck could be able to come in, hit the dumpster back out here and then pull in a forward motion. The fire truck, if it had to come through here, would be able to pull through and out in a forward one-way motion. So this driveway aisle here on the east side of the building is a one-way in. The driveway on the west side, the residential side, would be a two-way driveway. So since it's a dead-end street, nine times out of ten, I guess the population that's going to be residing there, the students, they'd probably want to try to come in the first driveway since they're coming and get the shorter distance in the building. So the two-way allows them to just come in and out. And then anybody that's parking in the garage area, they have a choice, but I would think they're going to just probably pull through the back. And then again, this will allow for fire truck, trash truck. And then if they get any daily deliveries, everybody's ordering on Amazon stuff nowadays. So we even added a loading zone along this side of the two-way driveway that'll at least allow the guy to pull over for a few minutes, drop off the packages and get out. Anticipating that when they're moving in, they're probably going to try to use the basement area to, to unload their stuff. So there's, there's plenty of room. We got an inset showing the parking underneath on this side here. The parking's pretty much along this back wall and here. The people that are parked here, they, they have room to, to back out in between the elevator and the center and the stair tower. Everything that is not marked with a parking space is going to be hatched, striped pavement marking on the, on the basement floor of this, of the garage floor of this building. So basically, that is only used for, for people to be able to maneuver a little bit easier. So, so we have the available parking indoors. We got our outdoor parking. We're going to have retaining walls to allow the site to, to fill in for the circulation, which before they didn't have the full circulation. But in order to do it, we have to add some taller retaining walls in the back. We are able to comply with the ordinance for that drive aisle. We've already, you know, created a profile of the alignment for that driveway and we, we've satisfied that maximum ten percent within twenty feet in order to make that all work with, with the ordinance, so we're, we're fine with that. We'll have to move forward with stormwater management when we get further along the lines. But clearly, there's, there's going to be room along the western side to put some additional evergreen trees for, for screening for the neighbor next door. We're showing a, a guide rail along this side of this alley because if you're on, on this alley on the top here, the site's going to be lower from that alley. So the, so that wall is to allow us to cut the, the earth deeper below the alley. So it's not like you're going to be looking at a wall, you're going to be looking down into the parking lot. So we'll have a guide rail for any vehicles that are driving along this alley so they don't fall over the retaining wall. We'll be, also be putting a fence that would meet a fall protection criteria with IBC so that you don't have somebody falling over the top of the wall either. Sometimes people will just put chain link fence or, or a privacy fence. But technically, if, if, if that manufacturer doesn't rate that fence for fall protection design, odds are it not, does, may not meet that because they're not willing to take the risk of putting that certification on their, on their fence. So we, we always make sure that we find a manufacturer that manufactures it specifically for meeting fall protection. And there's a few out there, so, so we can specify that. Parking lot lighting, I think we'll probably try to take advantage of the building for some of the lights to be able to avoid some of the poles that we may not need. But we might put a couple of light poles to help make sure that we get lighting. Good thing with lighting manufacturers, within the last few years, they've got much better at night's friendly sky-type lighting. It's LED, they can get better directional angling with their lights to make sure you don't have a lot of glare. So lighting has improved a lot over the few years with, with LED. So we can make a, an exhibit during land development that's going to show the foot candle level and we'll be able to show that, demonstrate that whatever lighting we do out here to try to make it feel secure and safe for the, for the students or whoever's living here, it's not going to spill over across the property line onto the adjoining property owner. So we can do that. And then as far as the utilities, you know, we're going to have all the utilities coming underground in order to serve this building.
Any questions?
Could you explain the underground seepage basin project?
So right now, tentatively, I'm just showing three locations. Until we get further along the design, we gotta, we gotta take some infiltration testing, try to make sure we know what we can do with, with the stormwater. There is an existing inlet roughly around this part of the property. We haven't been able to find out exactly where it's discharging, but it's pretty much got to be going towards the right because the whole topography, everything's going towards the east. So it's, it's going, it's either going across and then over that way, but it's somehow it's working its way towards a creek. So we have some way to be able to connect our stormwater facility into the system. We'll try to get some inlets, downspouts will be tied to it. And we'll typically try to get some release rate that meets the ordinance. We'll have infiltration that meets the ordinance that we can. If for some reason, worst case, you don't get infiltration, the DEP has, over the last few years, come up with another method called MRC design, which is basically putting almost like a underground dead storage pool to help capture the contaminants. So there's, there's a means now to, to, to work around that. But we can meet, with, with that option, we can meet the ordinances for the city for stormwater. We intend to do so. And I think the, the owner was, is considering strongly the, the use of solar panels on the roof to help with the environment also. So if you have any questions, we can...
Clientele, exactly who are you building these for?
Well, originally, we were thinking students. Like I said, just to give you a backdrop, I'm from Sun Hill. I was born and raised, my parents bought a house on East 14th Street in 1975. We lived there until about 1992. I used to play on this lot as a child, you know. I actually purchased this lot from Mr. Donovan Fledge. I know you guys probably don't, he lived around the corner, I used to shuffle. So originally, we were thinking, you know, possibly students. And then recently, we kind of were tossing back and forth, possibly, you know, maybe veterans or, you know, maybe senior citizens, you know what I mean? So we're kind of just tossing around. Because it is a dead-end street and like I said, it's literally been like that. I'm going to be 48 in May, it's been like that since I was a little kid and it's still like that today. It looks exactly the same, except for that football field didn't used to be there. It used to just be a walking track. So that's kind of what we were thinking, we were just kind of tossing around. We weren't set in stone with who the clientele would be, but it is a dead-end street, not a lot of traffic. It's been like that for a long time.
Because I'm thinking the apartment complex across from it is for everybody.
Yeah, that's just right.
Just, just curious.
It's been that way since the eighties, I think. I think that was built in the eighties.
Alex, while you're up, do you want to just speak to the dead end a little bit? I don't know if we really talked about it.
At the dead end, we're going to put a hammerhead to improve the neighborhood if they, or delivery. Anybody that goes down there by mistake, I guess, if they come down, we will put a hammerhead that's about, you know, the right-of-way is approximately fifty feet. A hammerhead is... Well, we were showing with this exhibit, the, the fire truck turn through the street, which they had had a good vote for. And the hammerhead is this area here. So it just has a look of, you know, that that was a shark and that's the hammerhead part. But I guess it's where it got its name. It's basically a paved area that's wider than the existing street. And it'll basically allow, it's, you know, smaller, I guess, delivery-type trucks. That if they come down at the dead end and find out the hard way like, like they do now, they might have to do three, four, five back and, back and forth in order to turn around. This will, this will facilitate that. So we're, we're putting in that to, for the, for the neighborhood to make it a little easier. Yeah.
That's an alternative to a cul-de-sac, basically.
Yeah, similar. Okay. I think that's, that's it for the moment. Do you have any questions, Mr. Ron?
Again, this is a sketch plan, so it's an informal review. I'm pleased that the applicant's consultant has all the, the prior reviews from the prior submission. Overall, this is a better layout, a better sketch plan that what was presented previously provides full fire truck access around all four sides. Couple minor things that I wanted to mention that I'm not sure fully got grasped by our letter, our, our memo. We would encourage that both driveways would be two-way. Try to get that because students will always take the quickest way in and out. So, you know, give them the full two-way traffic from both ways. And it will help with your fire truck turning templates as well. And as far as fire protection, we, being a multi, multi-unit apartment, it should have a sprinkler system. And then as you're developing that, a, the next fire hydrant is all the way at the next block to the west. And so extending the main and putting a fire hydrant toward the, probably after the, the T and street, where you're going to have a fire hydrant on the opposite side of the street for fire protection as well, in addition to the sprinkler system. And then the retaining wall along the alley, you have to come up with a retaining wall system that doesn't have tiebacks.
It's going to be concrete L shapes so that we're not extending through the alley.
Correct. All right, super. Thank you. Those are kind of the highlights. Other than, we encourage the stormwater management to include infiltration. We also caution about having infiltration up gradient of the foundation. So the, the one that's on the south side of the building, that may be problematic. Think about the DEP isolation distance for infiltration.
We could just use that for pickering, sort of kind of get the lower two for infiltration.
And then, when you resubmit, there should be signage and striping for the turnaround at the end of the driveway so that people don't think it's their personal parking area. At the end of 21st Street.
We'll probably have to stripe it and signage in the parking area.
And then ultimately, the overland flow goes down East 21st Street to the east. You have to be able to convey that. Hopefully, you'll be reducing the runoff, but make sure that you don't create an erosion issue. Those are the highlights, ma'am, and, and everything else should be covered in our April 4th memo.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks, Alex.
Are they expecting the recommendation, though?
No, this was the sketch plan.
Okay. I was writing it up. I just texted this girl, but I can't talk.
It wasn't. Maybe it was sort of... Right on that, the old St. Mark's Hospital?
Yes.
Yep.
You have my number? We'll respond to this submission. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. All right, we're on to the, the final item for review. And this is a preliminary final land development plan. It's a land development plan which proposes the conversion of an existing vacant hospital building on the property to a ninety-four adult-aged, or ninety-four, that's the number, for age sixty-two and older care dwelling unit apartment building. The conversion will occur in two phases. And to support the interior renovations, site upgrades are proposed to provide appropriate ADA access by way of redefined parking areas and walking paths. Also included in the proposed site improvements are new utility connections and improvements along the West 10th Street right-of-way and repaving of existing dilapidated pavement areas. We did see a sketch plan of this project on October 25th, 2024, or dated October 25th, 2024, and was reviewed by the Planning Commission on November 13th, 2024. This is in the C2R district. And you can see where this falls on the map. It is surrounded by R3 on the north and south. And then Veterans Memorial Park is to the southeast across West 10th Street, or West 9th Street, excuse me. Again, I'm going to go through my letter and I'm just going to go through some highlights that I want you to be aware of. So going on page two of my letter dated March 31st, under C, City of Chester zoning ordinance, comment one. I just want to make sure you're aware that the project already has a zoning permit and that dates back from November 14th, 2023. Skipping down to comment three, we just asked that the applicant clarify the height and type of fencing that's existing and proposed on the plans when they are revised. And then skipping to the next page, on page three, comment four. A comment about landscaping. We indicate that the applicant should consider additional landscaping and/or low walls to screen the visibility of the parking lots from the public right-of-way of West 10th Street. And that's primarily on the east side of the project site, which would actually be in this photograph. Looking south here, just screening the parking that's on the left side of the image. Right now, it's just buffered or fenced by chain link fencing and there is no screening of the parking. And they will be using part of that lot for servicing this building. Next comment I wanted to make you aware of is, is number seven. Just clarification on the plans, and it may have been on there and I may have missed it, but any proposed areas for loading should be clearly identi, identified on the plan. Next comment, number eight, the plan said it does include a fire truck turning plan. And I left with you today, we did get a memo from the Fire Marshal Office, which the applicant, I think, got through email today. And we can talk about those if you want to, the comments from the Fire Marshal Office. But that was one thing we were waiting on just a couple of days before this meeting. Comment eleven, the Shade Tree Commission did get a chance to look at this. It was in your packet. They did have some comments and they really desired to see more clarity on the landscaping plan because there were construction details for shrub plantings and ground cover, but there wasn't necessarily shown on the plan. So it was the desire of the Shade Tree Commission and the Planning and Zoning Department, to be honest with you, to see... So it was the desire of the Shade Tree Commission and the Planning and Zoning Department, to be honest with you, to see clarification on the landscaping. Related to that is comment number 12. There was a request to, for relief on street tree planting, and partly the reason is just because of the tightness of the sidewalk against the old convent building on the south side of West 10th Street. And we are asking in this letter that the applicant consider finding locations instead of a request for relief from zoning. Either find a different location for street trees that match the number that would be required in this plan elsewhere on the site, or actually provide a fee in lieu for the cost of the trees to the city for planting trees on other city-owned land. Comment 14, I asked for clarification on the location of the dumpster, where it will be located. Again, I may have missed that on the plan, but we did, we need clarification. And then lastly, on the second page, or the second page, on page five, the last page of the letter, I just wanted to make sure you knew that the Delaware County Planning Commission had received these plans and will be coming on, commenting on it next week at their monthly meeting. And then lastly, comment four there under general comments, I just want, and this relates to the landscaping plan. We just asked that the applicant clarify in more detail what's occurring as far as landscaping goes, where they have a hatch pattern showed on the site plan. It's hard to see on the screen here, but it's essentially the areas in the middle of the parking lot and near the street, West 10th Street, that we have concerns about what the landscaping is that is proposed. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions if you have any questions. Oh, on the photographs?
Yeah, the fast ones.
Yeah, the fast ones, they went way too fast. Yeah, sorry.
I mean, I mean, real slow.
Yeah. So obviously, this is a view looking southeast towards the building that's going to be rehabbed. That's the taller building, obviously. The convent building's to the right.
Is that 10th Street?
That's 10th Street, yes. And then this is a view when you're inside the site, looking northwest towards 10th Street. Again, really towards the building that's going to be rehabilitated. This is a view east within the site, so you're actually seeing the west end of that building. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it's that brick-faced building that's being rehabbed.
So that's just phase one?
That stays as is. Is that what you asked? I'm sorry.
No, phase one.
Oh, that's phase, well, phase one.
So that's not phase one? If it's not, don't go away from it. I won't see it.
Yeah. I will let the applicant clarify that, but all, the two phases will be in that building. They're basically going to split that building in half.
Okay.
Yes. It'll be 46, 45 units on the first half of the development, and then the remaining ones will occur inside that building. Basically, they're going to shut off that building until they get the funding. But again, I can let the applicant explain that.
Okay, can you go back to that one?
Yes.
All right.
And then the last image I had is looking from 10th Street, West 10th Street, southeast towards the building that's going to be rehabbed. And you can see the areas that need pavement improvement. New, new asphalt in that area. And the Fire Marshal admitted when they drew back there that it was pretty rough.
So the taller building, that's what he's looking at?
Yes.
Well, what's that other building beside it?
Well.
We're going to have the applicant come up.
Yeah, I can let the applicant explain that. I don't think that is the side of the convent.
Wasn't one you part use as an emergency? Are they still using that?
I believe that's in the front part. So there's really two tall buildings. The front side is, is the active side now that has the urgent care and things like inside of it. All right.
Okay, so we'll have the applicant come up and answer some questions, give us your names. State your name and address. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacob Tackett with TNM Associates. My office is located at 20, 2000 Market Street, Philadelphia. I am here on behalf of the applicant to present the land development plans that were submitted for review and comments received on March 31st from the Planning and Zoning, excuse me, from the Planning and Zoning Officer, and subsequently on April 4th from Shade Tree Commission, Colliers Engineering, and today, the Fire Marshal's comment letter. I believe I can answer any questions you have, or I could just jump right into the, the presentation of the project, but it sounds like you guys have a pretty good idea already of what we're trying to accomplish here. The project itself is proposed over the course of two phases. As you noted, it would be in the same building, that brick facade, where a total of 94 residential units for senior living, independent senior living would be constructed. You know, there were two phases. I think it's 44 and 45 respectively in the two phases. We're seeking approval, recommendation for approval, maybe not today, but through the course of this application to combine those two phases on a single application. So we are looking at providing comprehensively the total, total site improvements that would be required and approved, or acknowledged to be approved through the engineer and the Planning and Zoning Officer on a single set of plans. The project, from an exterior perspective, really looks like the improvement of a single parking area today where there's currently overgrowth, dilapidated pavement, and general nonconformities for ADA accessibility. So in, as it relates to our project, we're kind of considering this our front yard, even though it's, you know, sort of interior to the site. So we're trying to improve, the goal is to improve that, provide additional ADA parking spaces for the intended occupants of phases one and two. Along with that, the, the property exists today as a single building with a couple of pedestrian bridges that are elevated off of, off of grade so that occupants, I believe physically could, but are not permitted to transition from the existing urgent care facing 9th Street to the residential component that we're proposing as part of this project. Again, there is an addition, another pedestrian bridge that connects to the convent. I don't believe any of those are active walkways, so they can't maneuver throughout the buildings right now, but they are an existing part of the structure. Part of, the, the reason I'm making that distinction is because currently there are existing utilities that come through one of the buildings that serve the entire development, essentially. And what this application primarily is proposing to do, in addition to ADA accessibility improvements, is to take the utilities that would be used for the senior residential development and, and separate those from what is currently being, what is currently servicing the urgent care facility. There, we did appear before you guys back in November for a sketch plan where there were a handful of comments generally related to parking concerns because this property does house several additional structures. So there was a request that confirmed that each additional, or each of the structures or each of the operations on site do in fact have enough parking spaces for their respective uses. We took a look at that. There were some emergency vehicle concerns that we can get into with the Fire Marshal's letter today. There were some general comments related to stormwater and as well as right-of-way improvements along at West 10th Street. This application is currently undergoing funding requests through the county and potential investors. There's a PHAF application associated with both phases one and two of this project. We're currently seeking approval through PHFA's process for the second phase of this project. So far, right now, we only have funding or approval for PHFA through the first phase, which is kind of the reason or rationale for breaking them up into two different phases for site improvements and, excuse me, site improvements and interior improvements. The project is intended to be, or the, the site is intended to be accessed interior, as an ingress point through 9th Street. And we propose to maintain existing driveways on 10th Street for egress. I'm going to walk over there. Through our improvements, we intend to, I don't have a place for anything. We intend to access the site through West 9th Street. Oh, thank you. Through 9th Street, travel northbound into what we're calling our front yard, and then to leave the site through the 10th Street driveway that exists there today. It is currently not wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic. We do not intend for it to be a two-way access because the site circulation intent for our front yard is to travel counterclockwise through this ADA parking field. And then to exit onto 10th Street, travel westbound, and then get back to 9th Street through public roadways. We also intend for the existing driveway on the left or west side of the existing development to remain a one-way emergency access in only for fire and emergency vehicles. I believe, I apologize, let me clarify that. Emergency vehicles and delivery vehicles. One of Paul's comments was to identify where the loading area is designated on the site. You did not miss it. We didn't call it out. But this is a reconstructed loading dock, and you had a question about the smaller or shorter brick facade.
Build, yeah.
Yeah. So that's going to be, as I understand it, sort of like the operational piece for the 94 residential units where it's a loading dock where they'll intake deliveries for, I don't know, the, the operations that they expected to have, whether it be bedding, or I don't think that Amazon deliveries will, will deliver back there, but essentially, if something's getting dropped off, back there is where it'll be.
And that's from the 10th Street side?
This would be from the 10th Street side. So the image that we're looking at on the screen right now is this left, plan-left driveway access, and we acknowledge that it needs a little bit of rehabilitation.
Can I ask one more question? So across the fence to the right would be the convent? Or am I wrong?
So what I'm looking at right now, the convent is off-screen to the left, in front of right there. So the convent is the, the building closest to, to West 10th Street, and that is currently vacant. There are no plans at this time to rehabilitate that or activate that space.
So they're going to leave the bridge open just in case you might have something that...
I'm speculating. I'm not a structural engineer, but I'm guessing that there are some concerns to tearing that pedestrian bridge down. I'm, I'm not sure what the applicant or owner's intended future goals are for that site. The building, it is a nice structure. It should be, in my opinion, used when, when available, or when it makes sense for them to do so. It's just not contemplated as part of this application.
The only reason I ask is because there was a mention about the fire truck access, and they mentioned the convent, so.
Yeah, we did receive a comment related to there being concern about the pedestrian bridge not being, or the way that I read the comment at least, the pedestrian bridge not being high enough for an emergency vehicle to travel underneath of. Our emergency vehicle template is intended to, or demonstrates that the, that emergency vehicles would need to get onto 10th Street, kind of following the same counterclockwise traffic pattern from our egress point where our front door is westbound, and then back into the site through the ingress point that you see if you go to the next, or that driveway right there that you see on the screen. And then we've, you know, demonstrated that through, at least building one, we can maneuver in and around, back up, and, you know, reverse and back up and, and maneuver the site. I believe that the Fire Marshal's letter comment two acknowledges that we are able to access each side of the building, but will need to obtain formal approval from them before we can say that that's been satisfied.
Now, from the pictures you have, it's up there now, the cars that's on the outside are there, will they become gated in? The area become gated in?
Are we talking about, for looking at that white car, that red car? So that's, that was another point of comment that was made as part of the sketch plan process. Those parking spaces are actually split between the hollow right-of-way and private land. The request has been made that those parking spaces are actually removed from, from their current location and that space be converted for pedestrian access. We fully, the, the client fully intends to comply with that request. One of the, the comments that I hope we can talk a little bit more about today in, in concept is that they are requesting to defer the improvements of those, the removal of those parking spaces and added ADA accessibility until the second phase of the project when funding is available for it. They did not contemplate that when they submitted their first round of funding requests to the powers that be. We understand that it is this public safety concern, so we're looking to work with the city at potentially a temporary solution while funding is obtained to curb those parking spaces, remove, excuse me, remove those parking spaces, curb the land, add some aesthetic green spaces, ADA parking, excuse me, ADA walkways and ramps associated with the, the public safety concern.
How are those neighbors going to feel about that?
The removal of those parking spaces? That is a good question. We've been discussing internally. The applicant has stated that they do not use those parking spaces, that they exist today and are currently being used by the residents across the street. It is a concern of theirs that this will be negatively received. But I, as an engineer, understand that there is a liability concern with them being located partially on private land. We would like to work with the township and, or, excuse me, the city and their engineer to figure out a solution, but they were hoping, the applicant was hoping, that some community engagement from the city would help smooth that changeover. I don't know if this is the appropriate format or forum to ask that or to make that point, but just wanted to put it out there. I know that it's a sensitive topic.
Any other questions? Yeah. Your gating situation, would they have to have a pass or something to get in and out? The residents that will live there?
My understanding, we're still working through fine-tuning the details. My understanding at this time is that the, and this is another comment that was made, I don't know if it was through Colliers or, or through you, Paul, but there's an existing fence here that we called out to remain that I think actually does need to be removed. My understanding is that the chain link fence element would be removed. The wrought iron pieces, I believe, will stay. But I, I do believe that access would be physically unimpeded, meaning that if a car wanted to drive through the parking lot, they could. I don't believe that there is, at this time, security access contemplated for this drive, for this parking lot.
So that would leave the residents on the outside, the ability to go in and take up some of the parking spots. Like you said, those are on the outside. That'll freely allow them to go in and use the, the new housing parking spaces.
I, I see what you're saying. I'm not in a position to make a concession on behalf of my client, but it's a, we're, we're solution-oriented here, so we're, we're definitely taking any suggestions under advisement. Maybe perhaps not for the intended, like, front yard of the Silvercare senior housing element, but there does exist a pretty large or substantial parking area adjacent to that, part of which we reserve for the second phase of the project, but I'll flip it over here. I have a colorized plan here that demonstrates our compliance with parking requirements for each of the uses on site. You'll see that there's a pretty significant area here that doesn't have any color to it, so in theory, there, there is, there's room. I'll say, I'll just leave it at that, but that's a good suggestion.
What's going to stop them from going? That's, that's only...
Right. So I think today that this parking area is fenced off, but if we can work with the city and come to a conclusion that helps soften that, I'm sure that the, the applicant is eager to figure out a solution to this to move the project forward. Their concern right now is just a limit, like, actually making those improvements as part of the first phase. They fully intend to upgrade the pedestrian access along the frontage of this redevelopment, but just haven't been prepared to, to undertake that effort as part of this first phase.
If I recall, did you say the second phase was the amenities?
Our, our, excuse me, our, the, the client's architect, I believe, said that at our sketch plan meeting the last time that we were here, back in November. I believe that is correct, that the amenity spaces would be included as part of that second phase. So it would be the, the additional residential units and the amenity spacing.
The drugstore, the restaurants?
Yes, I believe that's correct, if memory serves me. When we come back for our next meeting, I'll make sure everyone's here so they can speak to that.
Okay, and where was your dumpster going to be?
Oh, yeah, sorry. So dumpsters will be located inside the building, and on trash day, they'll be rolled out through the loading dock and will be picked up on an as-needed basis. But there will be refuse containers. Yeah, but there will be refuse containers inside the structure.
You won't have one of those trash chutes where everybody?
I certainly hope not.
Anybody have any other question?
I did, the signage.
There is no monument or freestanding signage proposed as part of this project. The architect, I believe, has building-mounted signage, that's a requirement through the PHFA process, but it'll be mounted on the building face.
And I didn't mean like electronic signage or anything like that, because most of the senior housing, they do have like a wood, wooden structure, some kind of structure that says, this is what this is. Because if I'm looking for it and I'm from out of town, I wanna know, okay, that's it right there.
Just a name on the building, what she's saying, supposed to make sense.
Or, or, excuse me, something that says, this is Leola's Square. You know what I mean?
Yes, I do.
Because you can get, you can come to see somebody and get totally lost not knowing.
Right, so to that point, there will be, in the future, a building mount, a building sign that's on the structure itself, but we don't intend to have, like, if you're driving down the street and you pass a shopping center, you see that big sign that tells you what all the stores are, we don't intend to have one of those.
No, not big.
Yes, it just would be attached to the building, or intended to be attached to the building at this point, yeah.
And how soon did you plan on starting the second phase?
As soon as we can get funding for it. If that came in tomorrow, I'm sure they would do it tomorrow. I know that that's not a great answer, it's sort of abstract, but I don't have a timeline. We're actively in application process right now for the second phase with PHFA. So based on that timeline from phase one, we're probably eight to 10 months out.
What about your landscaping? What do you, there were some comments about your landscaping, so...
Yes, so that's, this is great, I'd like to take an opportunity to talk about that as well, just to obtain some additional clarification. First, the easy one, we will clarify our landscaping plan, it's a work in progress, we're working with the architect and their, their designer to prepare the appropriate beautification for the, for this process. The hatching that you see right now is just a low maintenance ground cover, so something that might not to be, might not have to be mowed quite as often, but it's just lawn grass at this point. We do propose the two, I guess, did they not plot? We do propose two trees within the newly proposed parking island, which complies with the off-street parking requirement. There was a comment related to potential relief, sorry, there was a comment related to potential relief for the street trees because the existing grass area between the sidewalk and the curb on West 10th Street does not physically accommodate for the installation of new vegetation. It was a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Officer that potentially we could achieve compliance with that requirement through an alternative design by perhaps adding the required number of trees on site. That's something that the applicant would be interested in doing, especially if it helps satisfy some other preference comments regarding buffering. So we'd like to take the opportunity to work with the city to find an acceptable solution that avoids having to request relief and meets the spirit of the ordinance with buffering.
Anybody else have anything else? All right, and City Engineer, Mr. Ron, thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, we provided our engineering review comments in a letter to the Planning Commission dated April 4th, 2025. Our concerns are listed in there. It sounds as if the applicant is anticipating to revise and resubmit, is that a correct statement? If that's the case, hopefully they'll be able to address more of our comments and this would be appropriate to table and then see how they address it. Who knows, maybe a miracle will happen and phase two funding will show up and all the off-site improvements can get done. But unless you have any specific questions, we've documented all our concerns in our review letter of April 4th.
Any questions? Does he ask for a deferment? Okay, I have another question if you don't mind. You asked for a deferment for pedestrian access to local shopping on 9th Street or what have you. There was some deferment in there and you didn't agree with it or what was the...
Not that we didn't agree with it, no. We were, we were the ones asking to be able to defer that until the second phase of the project, because we wanna do it, but we wanna do it right. So that would require a design that is just not, wasn't contemplated when funding was requested originally for the project. And that goes back to the West 10th Street, these existing 15 parking spaces here. If I'm not mistaken, that is the reason for the comment and why we're asking to defer that specific area of improvement until the second phase to improve pedestrian connectivity to and through 9th Street.
Well, my other thing is, if you have people who are gonna be living in that first phase, why wouldn't you do that in the first phase? That's just my question. Because it would seem like those folks may need it as opposed to waiting till later. But go ahead.
I think that's the rationale that was made, the comment was, that was the rationale behind it. Our thought is that most of West 10th Street along the frontage of the property is existing residential development and that the shopping and access to public transportation is on 9th Street, particularly as it relates to the potential residence for our first phase. We would not anticipate anybody traveling north to West 10th Street and then around the block to get to those features, but rather take the inner site connectivity through the private property to get to 9th Street. It's just a shorter route to do so. So that was part of the rationale that we were requesting deferment on it, at least as it relates to the residents of this redevelopment.
And did you receive your will serve letter from Delcora?
We were waiting for the will serve from Delcora, they've acknowledged that they have capacity, we just don't have the formal document in hand. We do however have our will serve from the, from CWA.
All right, I think that's it for me. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, so we will let the City Engineer?
Sounds good.
It's up to you to...
Decide on what to do.
Yep, exactly.
I don't know, since we don't have everything here.
And I, if you want to hear, in my opinion, I would agree with what Ron had suggested that this be tabled until revised plans appear and they're ready to present those revised plans at another planning commission meeting.
I mean, that always seems to make sense only because we don't have everything, you don't have your will serve letter, you know?
Agreed, yeah.
Those kind of things are like, you need to have before we can even, you know?
Absolutely agree. I didn't think that we would get to a point where we would be contemplating a potential approval today, so I just wanted to present the plan based on the first review, get some good feedback from you guys, and we'll take it back to the team, revised plans, and hopefully the next time we're here, we're checking off more of the items so we can then request recommendation.
Well, thank you, and we need to make a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission tabled the Silvercare Senior Housing project for now, waiting for further information from the City Engineer, from, I think it's Delaware County, and whatever else is still needed to complete this.
Your application. I second. Okay, has been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it has been moved to be tabled for the moment, but when you come back, like you said, you'll have all those things and...
Yes, yeah, we will come back before we're ready.
And also have some other people that can answer some of the questions.
Yeah, we'll have the applicant here to speak on behalf of operation hours, employment, et cetera, and then the architect will be here to speak to the internal elements and the building facade.
Okay, well, thank you very much, you did a very good job, I saw.
I appreciate that, thank you. Have a good day, guys.
Have a good day. Thank you. Okay, and we're doing the Director's?
We'll do a quick Director's Report. I have two items, really, one key item is, what I mentioned, shared with you last time is the deadline schedule? Hopefully it's readable this time.
It is, thank you very much.
Okay, good. You'll see that we still have extensions for 1100, 1130 Morton Avenue, they're due in June, there's indication they may come up at the May meeting. 611, 619 West 7th Street, that's been on hold for a while, they extended to August, which is good. 742 West Front Street, which was that big warehouse slash training center on, really, 2nd Street, they gave us an extension till June, we may have to revisit that in May, same with 1100 and 1130 if they don't show up. And then finally, 3308 West 2nd Street, if you remember, that's Brett Rose's signage company. They actually, their review deadline is the day before our next Planning Commission meeting, but just so you know, Susan, that we've asked for them to bring in, or asked them to request the extension through us, should have that, I would believe, in the next week or two, if we... Oh, did he really?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's imminent, and when I have it in hand, I'll have you sign it. And we have a backup plan if we do not get it, we can have council deny that plan before the next Planning Commission meeting, but I don't think it'll come to that. And then, just, just, I think I mentioned this before, since we've been here, since I've been here with Kim, we've been reading and studying the zoning ordinance and we've been coming up with some edits to make, there are some typos, there are some things that we think need to be addressed quickly and soon. I hope to share those edits with you in a month or two, and what I'll do is I'll send a file to you with some explanation of why we're doing them, like comments next to the edits, and then at a meeting we can go through those or a workshop, a separate workshop would probably be better.
So you said some comments on what?
On the zoning ordinance itself.
Okay.
Because we've, we've found some weaknesses in it.
I wanted to make sure I heard you correctly.
Yes.
So when you bring us in, are you bringing in the zoning board also? It's like a dual meeting or...
We would share with them, but I would wanna work with you guys first, because it really is, I need your input first before we work with the zoning hearing board. I'd certainly make it aware, I mean, there's a whole process with zoning ordinance update, public vetting, public hearing, council approval, et cetera, and county actually review of it. But I wanna get the ball rolling as soon as possible, because there's some things that we could just, I feel like, fix. It'll be a first shot at it, because there's stuff that maybe deserves greater study. We'll bypass that, because we'll deal with that later, we wanna really get through to the ones that we think are, need immediate attention.
Does that include the smoke shops?
Smoke shops is actually separate, and I'm glad you brought that up, because that is with the county now, that draft. So we're expecting them to come in, I believe we'll get comments after the April 17th meeting. And then we'll go forward with that, because at the May Planning Commission meeting, hopefully we can address their comments before that meeting, and you can kinda do a final recommendation for that and get it on its way to public hearing and council readings of it. So that's actually moving. This other thing needs more massaging and get your input on. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then just the last thing, the next meeting is May 14th.
14th.
Yes, so that's it.
Thank you. So with that, if there are any other questions or concerns, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I move that the meeting be adjourned.
And I second. Okay, it has moved in second, and this meeting is adjourned and is now 3:53. Okay, thank you.
We'll know in a few minutes whether the closure is...
I have the one of those streets, I don't have my...
So I'm saying, we'll know whether the closure is open or not at 4:00.
Oh, is that when they're gonna do that? And I'm sorry I said fire department, but you were hiding behind there and all I could see is a piece of a badge. All right, you have a good day, thank you.
Wait a minute, sir, what is your name? Pardon me?
That's an air.
That's an air, oh, okay, no, I'm just saying, I've never seen you. I mean, although I don't call you.
You know my dad, I'm very sorry.
Yes, yes, and the Brad Nairys, yes.
And roll around it for better or worse.
Yeah, worked at the school district, yes. Brad Nairy, yes, in the auto department.
That Guyer Mark then in that case.
That was who?
Guyer Mark, that's my father's brother.
Okay, okay, yes.
The kids are actually, his son, Mark is actually down at the charter school now, he's the chief operator. And I have two more relatives teach over, Drexel Newman, I'm always gonna call St. Roberts, you know?
Okay, yes, all right, it's small world. It's nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you as well.
All right, take care, bye-bye. I know that's right, we are a little long today.
I'm going to church today. It's Lent season. Well, we're going to different, I'm at St. Luke, but we go to different, we're St. Daniel, Lindy's Church, and, you know, we're throughout the city. It's all, we do it everywhere in here till, till Easter, yeah. And we'll be at Thomason's tonight. Are you serious, I'm like, sir, they minimum 35, 40 mile per hour on 3rd Street.
There's a lot, there's a lot of four-way stops.
Absolutely, there's no stops on there.
And they don't stop at the stop sign.
And you're like, oh, that's right, nobody stops. It's not that busy, I'm like, you don't better survey than you are, because I can tell you, I hear a brand van all the time, and people think it's a highway, 3rd Street. Well, let me, let me ask you, how many reviews do we have in this shop? About 12? I'm just being sarcastic.
Yeah, I see, there's one, they get one car, but that's it, but they're gonna use that car.
Unless you tow them away, they're very huge.
Yeah, they're gonna keep on using it. It's just trying to go for anything and make sure...
There is a pharmacy.
They don't wanna park up.
They need to provide pedestrian access to the pharmacy. And all the way to 9th Street as well.
Yeah, because I think that behind...
Age restricted house?
Sacred Heart, I mean, that hospital, the rooms are there.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, because...
They have a problem, those people are mean back there.
Need not lose their parking.
They're losing their parking, they have too many cars for one household. The houses are small, and they at least have two, should be the maximum. But some of them have six and seven, and they're not, where I'm at, they wanna park their home.
Plan on parking somebody else, you know what I mean, because they're gonna use the parking.
And I mean, but I'm not saying where I'm at, but they still wanna do it, they don't wanna walk, you know, that's my, they don't wanna walk. I have plenty of space where I'm at, but they'll park, I mean, I have pictures, I've shown the mayor, that they park right on my home.